Are you good, Anne? You get it?
I'm good.
All right. Everybody good?
Good.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May 8th meeting of the Campbell County School Board. Appreciate everybody being here tonight. And a special thank you and congratulations for Teacher Appreciation Week. Thanks to all our teachers and all their hard work put in to take care of our kids. We appreciate all you do, so just didn't want to be remiss if I didn't say that first thing. So, thank you very much. At this time, let's begin with Pledge Allegiance and a moment of songs.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First item up, we have a presentation from the Campbell County Educational Foundation.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Superintendent. Someone mentioned to me earlier that you should be addressing me as Madam President. I think we're going to go with that. Superintendent, members of the Campbell County School Board, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I'm Rose Epperson, and I'm here to represent the Campbell County Educational Foundation. We're a group of volunteers that have been working to provide financial assistance to our students to help them with their post-secondary pursuits. The Campbell County Educational Foundation Board includes Susan Brandt, Dean Farmer, Linda Grubba, Vicky Maddox, Elizabeth Nairhood, Brandon Treadway, Sam Vance, and Clay Stanley. The foundation was created in 2017 to support quality educational programs that encourage and prepare Campbell County students to become successful citizens of our region by removing financial and knowledge barriers to college and career success. When a group of us reached out to Dr. Johnson to ask if forming an educational foundation in Campbell County was a feasible idea, and what his thoughts were on what the foundation's focus should be, he recommended the Dual Enrollment Program. Dr. Johnson, we appreciate your guidance, resourcefulness, and supportive voice from day one. Your encouragement has helped us form a foundation for students to prosper from, and it will be a foundation that takes Campbell County into perpetuity. The financial backing we have received to provide students with a start to their lifelong success through college readiness programs is overwhelming. As a bonus, our county is also reaping the rewards with citizens entering the trades. Generous donors of the Campbell County Educational Foundation have now donated over $125,000 to Campbell County schools for the career guidance programs. Dr. Johnson, we started out in 2019 with our first gift of $5,000, and we are pleased to make tonight's gift of $25,000 in your honor. Thank you for helping us with the groundwork of this foundation and for helping lead us to our best year to date. You are leaving an outstanding legacy, and we wish you well in your retirement.
Thank you, Madam President. Do we want to go take a picture?
Sure.
Let's do it. Wow. I know I'm biased, but it's pretty impressive. $125,000 since 2019. It's pretty awesome. Okay. Next item up, we have the Special Education Advisory Committee.
Good evening. My name is Amy Witt, and this is Kim Lindberg, and we are your current co-chairs of CAC. So, we're coming to you to give you our annual CAC report, as well as to just provide some other information for you. So, this year again, we held the Check-A-Treat event at Ruffell High School. This year, we partnered with a local nonprofit just to give us a little bit more support and be able to collect donations. We had over 500, again, come through. This has become one of the largest special needs events in central Virginia, and other people are really looking at us and the model that we've done here in Campbell County because we do it for other schools and just being very open with that. And so, we're very excited every year to be able to do that. That's our Christmas. Mr. Maddox comes out every year, and he enjoys, and I know some of you have come out in the past. Again, this year, our graduation rate for students with disabilities has continued to meet and exceed all the expectations of any of our surrounding districts. So, our Special Education Department is doing the job, and they're doing it very well, better than any of the other localities around us. So, that's something that the board should be very proud of. In addition, we do have some news. Both Kim and I have told the CAC committee, we met before, that both of us will be stepping down our roles come September. I have been a part of CAC since my daughter was four in 2009, and she will be graduating and going into the postgraduate of the adaptive curriculum. And Kim has been on since 2013, and she's taken on some other roles. And so, we will still be members of CAC, but we will just not be in the leadership role. Our list has grown. We have now toppled to 28 members on our mailing list, which is the most that CAC has ever had. In fact, tonight, we had, it's the first time that we've met in person, and we had two new members show up. So, we will go back to doing virtual meetings because we've been having a lot of parental participation with that, and so, we'll continue to do those, being that's what our parents need. Furthermore, Dr. Johnson, this is tough. I mean, I know. But we got to something a little special. You have, by far, have just always supported CAC in some of the toughest times. Most importantly, what I remember is right before COVID, when I put our name on the list and I asked you that our adaptive and our highly structured kids still be able to go to school. And you listened to us. Many of the school board members also took time to listen to us. But you were able to make it happen. You were able to support us, support the teachers that came into that school building, support the admins that had those teachers in, to make them feel that they were appreciated for coming in and that they were doing the job. There are a lot of other tough topics that I could bring up, but that by far made the biggest impact on our community. So, with that, we have a little piece of puzzle for you that says, "Never forget, you are the piece that made the difference." Thank you for your unwavering support, the Campbell County CAC.
Thank you very, very much. Okay. At this time, the board will hear matters from the floor. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak. Please be respectful of the three-minute time limit. Prior to speaking, please state your name and address. Comments must be directed to the board and not to staff, the audience, or the media. All right. First speaker up will be Ms. Crystal Coleman. Ms. Coleman.
Good evening. I'm Crystal Coleman from Alta Vista. Tonight, I'm going to continue the "Look What I Found Out" from my FOIA requests. When I initially asked which CASL programs our schools were using, I was told none. But that quickly changed to an acknowledgement of four such programs. Now, everyone who knows anything about SEL programs knows that they use all sorts of buzzwords like respect, kindness, empathy, belonging, and all those feel-good words to disguise that they are really indoctrinating kids with extremist ideas that many parents don't condone. And guess which company is at the top of the list? You guessed it, CASL. How many of you know what these programs are really about? How extensively have you advised parents about these programs? Are you aware that these programs have different tiers, which is a disguised way of school staff inserting the curriculum into the emotional life of a student? The teachers on your staff are not qualified, nor should they be expected to be, to act as prospective therapists. You don't give them enough time to teach the things they should be focused on, no less this: How familiar are you with the varied activities and the carefully selected language that is supposed to be used? I used to be on the webinar thread for Character Strong, one of your program selections, but I eventually got blocked. And why, you might ask? Because I asked questions about how they define the groups they assign children to, why some of the founders and creators of the program insisted on using certain pronouns, and not to mention how much parental involvement and parental rights are part of it. Kaboom went my access to Character Strong. This school board cannot shrug this off as nothing to see here, like it did with the concerns I repeatedly expressed on the revised history and social studies curriculum. This board publicly stated that Campbell County staff had reviewed that curriculum and saw no problems. Really? It took the election of a new governor and two complete revisions to get it back on track. So, I am asking this report, this board, to report back to the public that they have a full awareness of what SEL programs are, how they have transparently informed parents, and how all four programs Campbell County uses have been thoroughly reviewed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. Okay. Next speaker is Jackie Mendez. Ms. Mendez.
Well, good evening. My name is Jackie Mendez, and I'm a resident in Ebbington, Virginia, and the founder of Campbell Kids. The nation's report card shows scores in American History and Civics for eighth graders are down across the country and here in Virginia. The average U.S. history score dropped five points, with only 13% of eighth graders scoring at or above the proficient level. Going back to the start of the assessment in 1994, this year's history scores are their lowest ever recorded. The average civics scores dropped two points from 2018, with only 22% of eighth graders scoring at or above the proficient level. This was the first drop in the scores recorded for civics. The U.S. Department of Education's immediate reaction to the abysmal results was to blame the lack of funding and the culture wars. Apparently, there's not enough critical race theory being taught in K-12 classrooms. So, parents send their children to school to learn. These NAP results, as well as the scores released in September of '22, show that children are not, in fact, learning. The trust between families and schools has been shattered, and it's going to take significant work and time to rebuild. So, as a board member who oversees these matters, I ask the following questions: What plans are being considered to have students here in the county master civics and U.S. history above proficiency level? What curriculum is being used for elementary and secondary education? Have you attended a class in the last month, in the last nine months of this academic year to observe? How certain are you that the materials used in classrooms are appropriate and balanced and an accurate view of our documented history? So, where do you draw the red line, board members, to assure our community that children are being taught patriotic content and not the utter garbage promoted by progressive advocates of indoctrination? So, you are the decision-makers, and we are not satisfied with the events of the last year and a half. We need bold leadership and courage to address these issues. You cannot go back to business as usual of highlighting the good and hiding the bad. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mendez. Next up, Mr. David Gifford.
Thank you for hearing me today. My name is David Gifford. I live on 285 Beezy Road. Says it's Lynchburg, but it's actually Campbell County. Before I discuss what Concord District citizens are saying, I offer gratitude to the Legacy Organization, who is attempting to mentor students about their futures, and to John Hardy and his team for having a job fair for students that are able and willing to work. Someone said it takes a village to raise a child, but a better motto is this: Wise students and their parents consider all the resources at their disposal. Thanks to Mr. Hardy and Legacy, Campbell County families have more options to consider. Also, I want to thank all those responsible for this new initiative that provides preventive notification and summaries about library books. This is an answer to prayer. Hopefully, this program will include follow-up evaluations of these summaries to make sure that their publishers don't overlook the details about which families are most concerned. This response is proof that everyone benefits when concerned citizens speak up. Since I have last seen you, I have had more time to ask Concord citizens what they want you to know. Once again, many people feel isolated from participating, but good suggestions are coming forth. One man said that our school should always hire the best possible employees so that we get it right the first time. Another man encouraged me to do my best, which advice I also pass on to you. Once again, the response to the Bible's literature elective is overwhelmingly positive. Some believe this will produce benefits beyond SOL knowledge that we will never be able to quantify. One man almost became emotional, amazed that someone knocked on his door with this concern for our schools. As part of my efforts, I attended the Ford High School Track Meet at Heritage High School, and a gentleman from the little city of Lynchburg gave me this flyer. The city is hiring a non-biased outside firm to evaluate their school's facilities and offer proposals for the future. People can complete a master plan survey and will be invited to feedback sessions about the proposals. I explained that I lived in Campbell County. He was only a substitute for both LCS and CCPS, and he still wanted my input. This process seems much better than the board of supervisors claim that $50 million worth of unidentified improvements to BHS are necessary and advisable and in the best interest of the county without proof. Thankfully, Mr. Jones informed me that this proposal includes AstroTurf. And I must pass on to you that the people I've spoken with about this so far, about this question so far, about this so far questioned both the need for AstroTurf and why BHS gets special treatment. In my view, Rustburg High is more central, has more space, and is thus a better location for an AstroTurf field, that is, if the county really needs one. In sum, I commend you for your concern for taxpayers and for families, and hope that your progress in this regard will continue to blossom.
Thank you, Mr. Gifford. Next up, Mr. Doug Behringer.
I'm still Doug Behringer, and I still live in Rustburg. And just wanted to apologize for missing the last couple of meetings. I've been extremely busy organizing a Senate District Convention, a House District Convention, and assisted in a Senate District Convention last week and Saturday. But, so I don't have remarks as prepared as usual, but I wanted to, I'm very thankful that I was afraid I would miss seeing our superintendent before he left. And I'm glad, I want to extend my thanks for your years of service. And so, beyond that, I'm supposed to address the board, but I would want to extend a thank you to Nikki McCullough, who is listed as the school secretary at Rustburg High School. She was extremely helpful in helping the Campbell County Republican Committee arrange to use the Rustburg High School gym for two different times for a very reasonable price. First, for the Republican Mass Meeting, and then for a Virginia House District 51 nominating convention. When only one candidate filed before the deadline, we were able to cancel both, and she was equally gracious in helping us cancel our reservation and charged us no penalty for cancellation. And as a side note, I learned that Ms. McCullough is the daughter-in-law of the former Pamela Goff, who attended school from grades one at Rustburg Elementary through grade 12 at the former Rustburg High School, which leads me to my next topic, school community. It is a community. My primary topic has been to serve a reminder of how I believe we should and must define the Campbell County school community, the concept of community. When I first started attending board meetings in 2017, I got the distinct impression that school community was pretty much limited to students, teachers, administrators, and school board. After the horrific problems were uncovered at Loudoun County Public School, the concept of school community was extended to include parents, although a significant number of educational professionals and liberal Democrat politicians continue to argue that parents should have no say in what and how their children are taught. Fortunately, I did not see this opposition in Campbell County, and I thank you for that. However, I just want to remind everyone that I would expand the concept of school community on more than just sporting events to include all Campbell County taxpayers who fund the schools and all voters in Campbell County who elect you, lady and gentleman. And we all have a stake in the students that you prepare and train up to be our future leaders and our community. And I just wanted to very quickly congratulate Clay Stanley. I would like to continue our conversation on the subject of curriculum and how we can access books online and hard copy. I take the blame for letting that fall to the floor with all my other duties, but I look forward to continuing that conversation with you as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Behringer. Okay. Next item up, approval of the April 24th, 2023 meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the minutes for that meeting.
Second.
We've got a motion by Mr. Brandt and a second by Mr. Phillips. Is there any further discussion regarding the minutes? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Payment of bills.
Mr. Chairman, I reviewed the list of bills and moved to approve payment.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Dr. Miller and a second by Mr. Maddox. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ms. McClanahan, acceptance of donations.
Tonight, you have five donations that were listed in advance of a meeting on board docs. Unless you have any questions, I ask that you approve them as presented.
Motion.
Second.
And a motion by, is it Mr. Phillips?
Yep.
And a second by Mr. Jones. Is there any further discussion? I would just say, you know, every week I look at this, or every month I look at it, and it's really appreciated. It comes from all different sources, and we appreciate everything there. So, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consideration of requests for supplemental transfer of appropriations. Ms. McClanahan.
Tonight, you have five appropriations on board docs. Unless you have any questions, I ask that you approve them as presented.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We've got a motion by Mr. Phillips and a second by Dr. Miller. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Sisk, consideration of religious exemptions.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Tonight, we have one family that's requested a religious exemption for their children. Request that you approve that.
Motion.
In the letter that was...
If there's specific information about the student, I would need that to move to a closed session.
Say that again.
If there's specific information about a student towards a specific...
It's about the letter that was written, reference homeschooling.
It's not. I have spoken with the person specifically and asked them for what they requested and the code section that was addressed specifically is talking about religious...
Okay. Thank you for that clarity.
Okay. And a motion by Mr. Maddox.
Second.
Second by Mr. Brandt. Is there any further discussions or questions for Mr. Sisk? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Sisk. Personnel report. Ms. Hunter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, you have another full personnel report in front of you. Unless you have any questions, I'd ask that you approve it as written.
There are no questions, I move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Brandt and a second by Mr. Jones. Is there any further questions or discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Hunter.
Sure. I did want to point out, if you don't mind really quick, in the right time this month. We do have Ms. Ferguson. She is the new appointed assistant principal at Tomahawk. She came to the meeting.
Welcome.
Ms. Ferguson is coming to us from Amherst County, and her own kiddos went to Rustburg High School. So, she's got ties in Campbell County and excited to be here with Mr. Adam, who joined her tonight at Tomahawk.
Great.
Welcome aboard.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Great. Okay. Next item up, report of the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear that? Is this mic working?
Yep. Okay. Just a couple of things. One, as we close in on, in May, you know how fast and furious everything happens. We're going to be putting out information to you. I know Dr. Hale put out an email today with secondary award ceremonies and all those events. We'll be sure to get all of that out, and we will plan to have our valedictorians and salutatorians hopefully here in June to be recognized. We'll work on that. But I'll just quickly say thanks to the, thanks for the kind words from CAC. And I alone did none of this. It's our team effort, Dr. Pontius and his group, all of the teachers, staff, you know, take a lot of pride. And I said this recently at Laurel, I'm humbled by the good work that they do, and I appreciate that work. And also to the foundation. And Ms. Epperson was correct. We first, a small core group, I appreciate... I appreciate the whole board, but it was a small core group that came together. We were one of, I think, the only school systems around that didn't have a foundation, and we began that process. I never thought I'd learn, I know I do not want to be involved in IRS tax code, because when we were working on that application, it was not fun, but we worked through it, and really proud of the work that they have done and the good things it's done for our dual enrollment program. It's allowed us to expand our offerings, as well as the number of students that will go. And I think we have a record number of students this year that have applied to go, over 115 students. So, anyway, that's all I have. Thanks.
Okay. Board, different topics on the board. Mr. Brandt.
Don't really have much, other than Campbell County Education Association. Want to thank them for their continued bringing many, many dollars in and the hard work they all of them doing. Amy, thank you for your presentation tonight. Excellent, and all you have done. Thank you for all your years of service, for both of you. And we said, and the graduates will be here, salutatorium, valedictorium, be here next month, and just all the graduates coming up in a few weeks. Want to congratulate all of them, all the high schools. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Brandt. Mr. Maddox.
With this being Teacher Appreciation Week, I'd like, definitely thank the teachers for everything they do, but I'd also like to thank the PTAs, PTOs, the Booster Clubs, I know the Chrome Club, we're feeding the teachers this week, for everything they're going to do to support the teachers this week. But, that's all I got.
Dr. Miller.
Yeah, I'd also like to recognize the teachers and appreciate all that they do. And Campbell County Educational Foundation, I certainly appreciate all the hard work that the members put in, but I would just like it to be shared that thank you to the donors, and I hope that that trickles down at our personal appreciation from the board to each donor. That's just a real blessing to our school system, the generosity. The CAC team, Amy and Kim, I know you've put in a lot of work. We are proud of our SPED program here, and I have the privilege of being on the Laurel Board and know how hard Dr. Pontius is, how committed he is to these kids, and I just appreciate all the work that you do, and I hope that the team continues to be a strong team under the next leadership. But thank you for all you've done. And I wanted to thank again the Maintenance Department. We got rid of some dead trees on J.J. Frey property, and I appreciate that work, so. And thank you for the speakers that spoke to the board tonight. That's all I got.
Ms. Parker.
Well, thank you, Chairman. I appreciate that. Yes, Kim and Amy, thank you for all your years, and I'm glad you're staying on the board. I've only heard wonderful things, both in the school and outside in the community, and Mr. Behringer mentioned about community, kind of tie that into. The community is really involved. I got to the end of the trunk-or-treat this year, brought Michael Myers, you know, my husband's always Michael Myers, and that was a lot of fun. Plan to be there with the Jeep next year. And yeah, it's great, and I hear about it in other parts of the community, whether it's home builders, you know, real estate everywhere, about that specific event. So thank you guys so much for doing that and for everything you've done. The ladies who have already left, I mean, the Educational Foundation, how amazing is that? I can't even thank them enough. I just learned tonight, you know, they have grant writers, and they have mailings, and you know, all of, all that goes in it. It's not just a phone call and asking someone for a donation. There is a lot of work. So I appreciate all their volunteer time to bring that extra money to our children. My children have benefited from the dual enrollment and the tech center as well. Don't want to get out of order on my schools to thanking people. Let's see, I want to thank, and I just jumped over, but Mr. Scott, my favorite government teacher, I don't know what I'll do without him, but he had a mock court in his, at school. It was amazing. It was for all students. They took turns being in positions or being on the jury, so it wasn't just, you know, the popular kid got to be the lawyer, you know what I mean? They mixed it up, and they all did an amazing job. Just the confidence building that I watched, you know, in the, for the children who don't normally stand up, it was just mind-blowing. I was very impressed. I want to thank and congratulate Ms. Emanuel, our theater teacher at Brookville. She's been amazing for my family and anyone who gets around her. She's just amazing. And I just, I went to the Newsies performance on Friday. The kids were unbelievable. I mean, the choreograph, the choreography, I can't say it correctly, I apologize, was off the charts, and it was just amazing. And again, talk about community, the room was filled. And I heard they had a great, they were packed every night, so that's fabulous as well. But also, Mr. Scott's getting ready to take the kids on a field trip to the senior government class, to the courthouse, the sheriff's office, and the 911 center, call center, which I think's awesome as well, and they can see how our community, other things they can do when they graduate as well, trying to talk to folks about getting involved in law enforcement. And I'm glad we have the posting for the events that were shared with us for across the county. I did reach out to the middle school and the elementary school. We've got a talent show at the elementary school coming up on the 25th, Field Day on the 30th, and then fifth year, fifth grade graduation, right, on the 31st, last day of school. Also, eighth grade awards, not graduation, but awards at the middle school on Tuesday, May 30th, so I'm excited to go and attend those as well. And my last thanks is to a friend of mine, Rusty Elliott, who works at Virginia MedFab out in Appomattox. He was able to get his company to donate five angle grinders to the CBCC welding program, to the professors over there, to help the kids have access to one-on-one machinery. So, want to thank everybody for that, and happy Teacher Appreciation Week.
Thank you, Amy. Mr. Phillips.
So yeah, thanks again to the Campbell County Education Foundation for their outstanding donation tonight. Again, thanks to all the teachers for Teacher Appreciation Week this week. Special Education Advisory Committee, Amy and Kim, thank you to you two, and Amy, congratulations to your daughter for her accomplishments, and thanks to both of you for your hard work. And lots going on at the schools. I'll hit a few highlights, a real busy month coming up. Wanted to recognize Bailey Morris at Rustburg High School. He was selected for the Better Business Bureau Student of Integrity Scholarship Award. May the 11th through 14th, the presentation or the play Willy Wonka will be at Rustburg High School. That's Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and I think most all the schools have a play. You mentioned Newsies, but a lot of theatrical events happening now at the area schools, so try to get out and support those events. May 15th, SOLs begin, and there's the CBCC commencement ceremony, which a lot of our students will be involved in with the dual enrollment. Spring Chorus Concert is at Rustburg High School, May 16th at 7:00, and the Band Concert is May 18th at 7:00, so a couple of more events there. Let's see, Senior Community Awards Night is May 30th, and lastly, June 3rd is the graduation at 1:00 for Rustburg. And then on the Yellow Branch side, pre-K kindergarten PTO performance is May the 9th, so if you missed the high school performances, there's performances at elementary school as well. They have the Field Day coming up on the 30th, and lastly, the fifth grade and pre-K promotion ceremonies are May 31st. So, like I said, a lot going on at all the schools this month, so try to get out and attend those activities. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Yep, Mr. Jones.
Just again, Teacher Appreciation Week, I mean, I hope that teachers understand how much we appreciate what they do. I mean, it's, it's a thankless job, but we really appreciate what they do day in and day out. I couldn't do it. But Campbell County Education Foundation, they continue to bring us generous donations, and we just truly appreciate it. It's just a great effort they put forth, and we can't thank them enough. The donations again tonight, truly appreciate those. Amy and Kim, appreciate all y'all, your leadership roles, appreciate everything you've done. Thank you so much. And one day last week, I got to experience Bee Drive at the close of school. I mean, I thought Rustburg and Concord were bad, but I think y'all made lead that parade, but I heard y'all talk about it, but I got to experience it, and my wife was trying to figure out whether they were going to Tomahawk or Rustburg Middle School, and I said, I don't know, it's just a mob of people there, so my heart's out to you guys too, so that's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. I just have a couple of things. First, I'll echo Dr. Miller. Appreciate the Educational Foundation, but also all the donors that contribute. And there's a lot of hard work that goes in soliciting those donations, but if it weren't for the donations, it wouldn't exist. So I thank everybody again for that. Again, happy Teachers Appreciation Week. Thanks to all the teachers and support they get for all they do for our kids. And then, last thing I had is just to, just kind of to mention that the STEM Academy is hosting their senior banquet and award ceremony tomorrow night, and I think, Dr. Hale, you and I will be attending that, looking forward to that, as they close out the year. So that's all I've got. If we have no other comments or questions, I will entertain a motion to take us into closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we convene into a closed meeting for discussion or consideration of the investment of public funds where competition or bargaining is involved, where it's made public initially, the financial interest of the governmental unit would be adversely affected in accordance with Section 2.2-3711, parentheses, A, parentheses, 6 of the Code of Virginia, 1950 as amended.
Second. Got a motion by Mr. Phillips, a second by Mr. Jones. There's no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We'll take a quick, five-minute recess.[1340.51] We'll take a quick five-minute recess.
motion by Mr. Brandt, a second by Dr. Miller. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand.